Okay. All the Board of Selectmen meeting to order for April 12th, 2022, 6:03. We do have a quorum present in person. But we also have our third board member, Kieran Meehan, who is joining us remotely. And under the town remote participation policy, I just have to announce that. We do have Kieran, who is a board member that is attending remotely by our speakerphone for this meeting for 4/12/2022. For reasons A and C in our policy. And that, Kieran, I have to ask you, can you hear me?
I can, loud and clear.
Okay. Let the record reflect that member Kieran Meehan's attendance by your speakerphone can be heard by all present at the meeting. So when we take votes, we have to do a roll call. And that should be it. Right. So our agenda tonight, in public forum, followed by appointments, which I do not believe we actually have any.
No.
So our new business will be the acceptance of a donation of sign for the Swallow Union Elementary School and approval of the site location. Review, vote, and sign the annual town meeting warrant. The timeline and planning for staffing discussion to include the town clerk, fire chief, treasurer, collector, planning and conservation administrator. Discussion on the fire chief hire and use of the consultant. And lastly, a vote on the use of Wetlands Protection Act funds for consulting and technical assistance for the Drew Boardwalk project. And we have one set of minutes from March 29th, 2022. So we'll start off with a public forum. Anyone tonight that would like to speak to anything that is not specifically on the agenda? Being none, we'll move on. No appointments. So our first item of new business is the donation of a sign for the Swallow Union Elementary School. I believe there were, does anyone here to speak to that?
Yeah.
Could you speak your name?
So I'm Sarah P. and I'm a fourth grader and then two others. Thanks for having me come today. I appreciate this moving forward. The fourth grade class, you may not know, is part of Union, all these kids are gift. Apparently for years and years and years, they've been asking for a sign at Swallow Union that indicates it's a school. And so the fourth grade decided that's what they want to do for a class gift. We secured a sign maker. We'll do it at zero cost, just the wood and the materials. We've gone through three steps now, to maybe accepted it, to zoning, holding the size, and sort of fix the size specifics for that. We did this historical commission last week, and so I think this took the last step. And so I think Jake gave you the photo and everything. If not, I brought a copy.
Yes, if you have copies.
Okay, so I don't, I hope you brought one. So this is what it looks like, this is a rough sketch. And then this is the location that the Historical Society approved. So it's sort of like off to the right and you're facing the union school. There's a dead tree kind of over here. You'll see it from 113, but it's up on a hill.
I know where it's.
It's not like, it's not riding traffic. It's kind of like an angle of the building. So the Historical Society said the sign had to be white with black lettering, so that's the point.
So it's kind of look like the entering town.
What's that?
It's sort of, it's reminiscent of the entering Dunstable town signs.
Yeah, and the guy who was with the sign, he made a statement, the Historical Commission, he has a special connection. He worked summers at Mass Quod. He was a friend of ours, he was actually a senior garden manager at my father's, he was a teacher at his father's law. He was friends with family. And so he, again, graciously was like, I would do it pretty, he does a lot of historical things around. He used to live in dairy, so he lives in historical dairy. Townsend, so. Yes, that's what we're hoping to do for the local town for those.
So where this guy is standing?
That's Mr. Meyerson, so he's standing like right behind her.
I recognize him.
So that's my daughter.
All right. Is this the proposed location?
Yeah, it would be right in front of where they are. There's like a dead tree right there.
I think we do. I was actually just looking at the map.
You do all that.
We do it, the church.
It was the front part. We wanted to do it by the road, and it was the church property. So then we looked to see, it goes right across where those parking spots are, that's all church.
Cuts right through, I was looking at that.
Like above it. The Historical Commission did one closer to the flagpole, so this is sort of away from the flagpole and still on the town property. There's again, a big tree, dead tree stump there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, as long as we're sure.
Yeah, that's the first thing we checked.
Yeah, as long as we're sure, because that land gets a little funny over there. I knew there was some issue with it.
It does go straight across, I was just looking at it earlier today.
It literally looks like, I mean, at least from the map on the town, let's say, it goes straight across some of those.
Yeah.
Can I see those pictures?
I don't have it. Yeah. There is a plan that shows exactly where it is. And it does sort of split that parking lot.
I think the drawing that has the new parking lot.
Shows the property.
Shows that a property.
It does, yeah, that's what I was looking for.
Now, where in relationship to the principal and your daughter?
It would be in front of that.
Just in front of them?
Yeah, so it's like, I don't know, if, I mean, it's a stump that wasn't to be that area, I don't mind that, but. But it would be right near where that stump is.
And is this going to be relatively low to the ground?
No, I mean, it would be, I mean, in terms of height, it would probably be like four or five feet total for the post there. So the sign itself is thirty, thirty-two inches high. So it'd probably be about, yeah. You know. But nothing could see it, but also within the.
But it's off, it's off to the, it's off to the right of the, of the union building.
Yeah, yeah, it's not.
You know, I didn't want, you know, the sign blocking the, you know, the front of the, the site of the building.
Yeah.
But it's going to be off.
Off the side.
Can I ask him for a question?
Yeah, hold on one sec, Kieran.
The district, the school district, because they also maintain the flagpole, it's just a part of there. And I got that. Jake, I just swacked your. And if they don't maintain it, I will maintain it.
Does itself.
Okay, sorry.
We have a question from Kieran. What was, Kieran?
So, yeah, so I think it's a great idea. My most important comment is, what I think is an important comment is making sure we're 100% on those property lines with the church. Being sure, and I'm sure, we know this background there.
Yeah.
With the church, sorry, in terms of where the line is, so that, otherwise, I think it's a nice idea.
Yeah. Well, we do definitely have a plan that shows the property lines, and I think that can be easily sorted out. With that plan, and we can just make sure it goes in.
That was before.
Yes.
School, mobile school.
Yeah. So, yeah, I think that can be addressed easily.
Thank you.
Is that wood?
Yeah, wood, yeah.
Cedar, I believe.
Cedar and Douglas fir.
Well, the reason I asked, you know, the school district is not, not real good.
About maintaining.
About maintaining stuff. So, you know, good luck with that. The sign is, you know, the sign looks nice, as long as it's not directly in front of the building. I think that's it. You've got to advance this to a vote.
Yeah, that's, that's. And this cedar, Douglas fir.
Does the sign have a identifier on it that says it was donated by the class?
So on the back, they will say, fulfill, et, like, donated by the 2022 fourth grade class.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then I think you might need a permit from the building inspector. Or whoever.
I don't know, I didn't see my idea, but.
All right, just be sure.
We'll run it by him anyway, just to be sure.
Be sure there's not some.
Yeah. Run it by him.
Ruling that says you're getting a building permit for the building. Isn't going to cost you anything, but it's just a piece of paper. The sign guy should be aware that he needs to, or he should talk to the building inspector, find out that he needs one. And then whoever's going to dig the holes needs to call DigSafe.
Okay, I talked to the building inspector already.
It, it's just a, just a formality, just, just ask him, that's all. He may say no, he may say yes. I don't know whether we have, we don't have a lot of signs in town anyway, if you can help, but.
Yeah.
I think I just follow it and just be sure. And then the sign guy needs to mark that up, because I, you do want DigSafe, because there is a feeder that runs along there. I don't know where it runs, but there's a pad mount transfer for that school, and that feeder does something over there.
Okay.
Yeah. All right, any further discussion? Kieran, any other comments?
Sounds great, thank you.
Okay. There a motion?
Oh yeah, Matt, I move that we accept the donation of the sign for the Swallow Union Elementary School as provided.
Second.
Any further discussion? There be none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Ron, yes?
Ron, yes.
Leah, yes?
Kieran, yes.
All right, thank you. All right. Yeah, thank you. Okay. The warrant, review, vote, and sign the annual town meeting warrant. Probably go through it one last time. Kieran, you have a copy of it available to you?
I do, it's up in front of me now.
Okay. So this is going to be a fairly short meeting, right?
Town meeting?
Only nineteen articles? Nineteen articles. Article one, to hear and act upon the town reports of the officers, boards, committees, commissioners, trustees. Article two, unpaid bills for fiscal year 21. Looks like we only have one unpaid bill, and that is for Kevin Pecos, and that's for the governance committee consultations. Article three, transfer of the water enterprise fund. Seems like we do that every year.
We need to.
Yeah. Article four. Excuse me, the operating budget. So we will go through this line, but usually just the, what is it, broken down to salaries and operates?
Who's going to read that budget? Well, you can, as long as you're, okay, with that, in the past, the FinCon chairman has read it if you choose to. However, you're more comfortable.
So the past few years, Brian, Brian would read every article, and the chair of the board would.
Keep track.
Except, he, he would make the motion, and the chair would second it, basically. Before that, we used to have different people around the audience read the articles, but it's just made it, it made it much smoother just to have the TA just read each motion. And so, anyway, okay. Article five, free cash transfer for fiscal year 2023. Article six, revolving fund expenditure limits. Do you want to, should we go through these? Cemetery, eighty-five hundred, recreation, seven thousand. Council on Union Transport, five thousand. Permit fee applications, permit application fees, rather, five thousand. Approval not required plans, fifteen thousand, transfer station, hundred and twenty thousand. Article seven, borrowing for the Route 113 project costs. See if the town will vote and raise and appropriate transfer funds, borrow, otherwise provide a sum of money in order to pay for the costs associated with the design of improvements and right-of-way acquisition. Wanted by the select board.
You don't have a next to copy of that thing?
We don't.
These all are like the official ones that need to be signed, but.
Okay, so do me a favor, just speak up a little bit.
Okay.
That's a question on the transfer station?
Yeah.
Why do we keep calling the transfer station? What's the issue behind that? Why is it?
There was a reason, and I don't remember, there is a reason behind.
There is some kind of reason now.
That transfer station's going to be gone six years ago.
I think it's the budget line item.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it just got, it got indoctrinated into a line item budget title, and it just has never been officially changed. We just. It's never seemed like a priority, really. Anyway. Okay, article eight, borrowing for the Groton Dunstable School District capital needs. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer funds, borrow, or otherwise provide a sum of money in order to pay for the town share of capital expenses in relation to the Groton Dunstable Regional School District. As further described in the schedule of capital improvements on file with the Dunstable Town Clerk. Provided, however, that this appropriation shall be contingent upon passage of Proposition Two and a Half Capital Expenditure Inclusion Referendum. To assess additional real estate and personal property taxes for a single year under Chapter 59, Section 21 CI One Half of the, really? Is that really? See One Half, I One Half, okay, of the Massachusetts laws, or take any action there to. That's the article that will also be followed up with the ballot, the ballot question. The next week. Article nine, free cash for the police station improvements. See if the town will vote to appropriate free cash surplus revenue in the sum of seventeen thousand to repair and replace flooring in the police station. Article 10, free cash for the emergency generator replacement. See if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of twelve thousand from free cash for the replacement of a generator to support public safety and public works function. Article 11, town hall HVAC repairs. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or otherwise provide a sum of money for the purpose of making repairs to the HVAC system.
That basically repurposed from all the articles, I'm trying to get to the root of that. It's not going to be another way of appropriating.
Okay, I was going to.
Transferring from available balances, and that will be included in the.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Article 12, water department offset, to see if the town will vote to transfer from the Water Stabilization Fund. The sum of four thousand, six hundred and four dollars and fourteen cents for supplemental funding approved at the May 13th, 2019 annual town meeting. Article 19, funded three thousand, eighteen, water systems improvement.
This, this is an article brought to my attention by Tom Townen, I made mention of that in the emails.
Okay.
Board and to the chair of the advisory. It appears that we've been carrying this offset for like the last two or three years, and every year when we do the recap, they have to subtract this amount from the free cash amount. So it would be best just to address it through water stabilization, in that way, the free cash.
Okay. All right, you're working that out with that. Okay. Um, article four.
Can I comment there, Leah?
Sure.
Two articles?
Yeah.
David, text, well, it should make sense to me, you know, want to just have some notes available to the town meeting floor, because if I were a resident, I'd wonder why keep funding something that not everyone is using, if you know what I mean?
Yeah, well, that's going to be an ongoing conversation. As long as we have a public utility, we're going to be having this conversation.
Absolutely, yeah, it's always good to add the notes, right? Just because you never know who's going to be curious about it in a given day.
Okay. All right, thanks, Kieran. Okay. Y'all set, David?
Yeah.
Okay. Article 14, Community Preservation Committee recommendations. To see what transfers or other actions the town may vote with respect to any recommendation, any recommended action of the Community Preservation Committee. Article 15, the Swallow Union Historic Preservation. To see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds pursuant to any applicable statute. A sum of money with respect to the recommended action of the Community Preservation Committee from the CPA Historical Allocation. For the historic preservation of the historical Swallow Union Building located at the historical, no, sorry, at fifty-two, 522 Main Street. And to authorize the Board of Selectmen and the Community Preservation Committee to enter into any grant agreement or other agreements related to such appropriation. Wow, that's a mouthful. Article 16, CPC, the Drew Boardwalk Project. To see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute, twenty-eight thousand dollars with respect to the recommended action of the Community Preservation Committee. The CPA Fund's allocation for design services for the construction of a boardwalk at the Drew property located off, little typo there, located. On Main Street in Dunstable to authorize the Board of Selectmen and the Community Preservation Committee to enter into any grant agreement or other agreements related to such appropriation. Articles 17, Chapter 90 Funds. To see if the town will vote to appropriate any sums of money received by the town under provisions Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 90, for the purpose, purposes authorized by Chapter 90, or take any action in relation there to. And article, I'm not going to read this whole thing.
I want to, you've got to read this.
Okay, I will, right. The general bylaw amendment, article 18, you're going to be sorry.
Don't you dare.
Amendment of the Wetland Bylaw, to see if the town will amend the Town of Dunstable General Wetlands Bylaw in order to correct typographical errors. Coordinate the bylaw with organizational initiatives by the Conservation Commission. Bring the bylaw into line with certain changes on state law and organizations, but not intending any substantive changes in the bylaw. So that it shall read as follows, new text underlined in italics.
Let me just ask a question. Has Meyer gone through this?
Yes.
Correct that line to, because I didn't, I didn't remember.
These, these strike throughs that are on.
Those are all part of the amendment that was filed.
Yeah.
I mean, I guess, you know, as long as they don't cause confusion.
Well, they'll get removed.
Okay. Is that the purpose of having them there? To show the delta view, what would you get over?
Yeah. Yeah. The strike throughs will, it's the text that will be removed, and that, which is in italics and underlined, is the new language that's going to. I mean, it's like changing some little things about. So it's adding, the commission shall determine within 21 days of the receipt of such request whether this bylaw does not apply to a particular area of land for the activity specified by the applicant. On having made a determination, the Conservation Commission will send to the applicant a determination of applicability form. It's just stating procedure that hadn't, but is required under the Wetlands Protection Act regulations. There are like 12 pages here.
Yeah.
Yes.
Page 14.
Okay, and then the last article. Article 19, creation of bylaw for combined parks and recreation commission. To see if the town will vote to amend the Town of Dunstable General Bylaws in order to abolish the Recreation Committee. And transfer its duties to the Board of Park Commissioners as follows, or any action in relation there to. And then there's language that relates to that procedure. And then there is the ballot question, which will be the following week. Shall the Town of Dunstable be allowed to assess an additional one hundred and eighty-eight thousand, nine hundred and seventy-four dollars in real estate and personal property taxes? For the purposes of paying for capital expenses in relation to the Groton Dunstable Regional School District. As further described in the Schedule of Capital Improvements on file with the Dunstable Town Clerk for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2022. And that's it.
Once again, what we can do is to make that, make that gap from Main Street on.
Oh, for the Drew Boardwalk?
Yeah, we can correct that, and then the board members, if you vote to approve it, you can have them come in after the fact.
Okay.
And sign it, you know, sign it to them.
Okay. Yeah.
Scriptings are.
Yeah, it's just located, it says located of Main Street, and it should be at or on, or, yeah.
It all depends on how critically you think it is, if it's not critically, it can be, it can be addressed with a motion, too.
Okay. I'm not overly concerned, we know where it is, the Drew property.
I think it's just a.
Let's just, yeah.
I got two questions.
Okay, what do you got?
First one, was I napping?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You were napping.
Okay.
That was. Yes.
Yeah.
Can I elaborate? I have a question on this.
Okay. I. I just read through the, the language of the Parks Commission when it got approved through the legislature, and I don't remember, I'm blanking. Was it, do you remember, was it three or five? It was three members. Okay.
We have five members.
Okay.
So.
I can read it here and see what it says.
Something I would like to know. This is the first I've heard of this.
Of this?
Yes.
This, this?
Yes.
Buying these things?
Unaware of any of this.
But this has been around a long time.
Been talking about this for a long time.
At least a few years.
Talk about it and actually putting it on the warrant, kind of. None of this is coming to the Parks Rec Committee, or at least at the occasion.
I, I, I don't know that that didn't happen.
I know it happened.
Yeah.
I've been there also.
Yeah.
We had, we had this at town meeting back two, three years ago. Didn't this have to vote in the legislature?
Yeah, it did, it did.
So it was, if you know, what it was, was in the past, by the law, Parks Commissioners were elected. The town then settled that they'd be appointed going forward.
I remember that.
And it took quite a while for that to work through, and that's all the town proved. Was that going forward, they would be appointed. I happen to be the last elected Parks Commissioner right now.
Yeah.
Your two other members, Tiffany and Jean, are appointed.
Right, yeah.
As well as the Rex guys, of which Tiffany actually has, she's the chairman of the Rex. So we're actually, there's only total of six.
Okay.
There should be ideally seven, if we give you, you know, Tiffany and most of them.
So the bylaw, when. Right, so when it was voted at town meeting, I think it was like 2017? When. It's been a long time. It may, I think it was 2017. Yeah.
It did, it did go through, and it.
It did go through, and it made, it made, it removed the electo, the, the park commissions from being an elected board, and made it into an appointed board, and to made it to be three members.
Yes.
Right, so.
That's all it did.
Right. It, right, it didn't combine it, but there was, it was the beginning of the ball rolling to join the two.
True.
Yeah.
I mean, talk is talk in the paper, right?
So what I'm reading here. The Board of Park Commissioners. The Board shall be a Board of Park Commissioners consisting of three members, who shall be appointed by the Board of Selectmen for terms not in three years in accordance. So I. So that's, it's. The Recreation Commission of the town shall be abolished as of the. As of the effective date of this bylaw amendment and all the powers and duties of the former Rec Commission authorized, but so will otherwise be transferred to the Board of Park Commissioners. So that, it seems like it's just abolishing the recreation and not joining.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to like to begin, I do try to pay attention to town events, but occasionally. And I thought I had a good relationship with Brian, I got no heads up about this.
Yeah.
So that's a lot of the bridge. The reason I raised this, it's because for why reasons. I think you know that unlike many boards, parks and recs is a hands part activity. We volunteer, we fix stuff, we repair stuff, we do stuff by ourselves, you know. Brian Convo, you know, out there with the, the skating rink all went along. That didn't happen, you know, because we paid somebody, that happened because we're a volunteer board and we do a lot of hands-on stuff. So if you kind of remove some of your volunteers.
No, I agree.
Things will change.
I'm, um.
This article was written by council, I had nothing to do with it.
No, I know, and actually.
This was something that was, had been worked on and.
It, it hasn't been to the degree that it seems like it has, honestly, this has been discussed, but this is, this is relatively new language for me too. It doesn't seem like just keeping it the whole group at three members. Works. Because you're, all this is doing is getting rid of the Recreation Commission, it's not absorbing the Recreation Commission into the new group.
Sure, and then the, so the balance would be in some of these of the, you know, the difficult details of it. What if parks and recs is combined and there's cer- certainly I could make some arguments for and I can make some arguments in what would be the appropriate size for. To accommodate kind of the self-help activities we do going forward. And it's not just hands-on, you know, me playing in the tennis courts, it's also monitoring defenders. That we hire to make sure, you know, they do cut along on the town fountain and the parkers.
Yeah.
That, you know, when there's a recreation activity, that it's properly coordinated and there's speeds and there's complications and there's insurance.
Who, who was the sponsor for this? We don't have.
It was on Brian's original draft that he told.
It was, okay, so that's where.
The board, the board doesn't feel confident about it.
It's been a while, yeah, I think it may be.
If you take it off, vote to take it off, take, remove it from the warrant and bring it back in the late.
In the fall, yeah, I think somewhere.
We're not at a point we're gonna sign it tonight anyway, so.
Yeah.
The board could vote to take, add the other article in on the water stabilization of the offsets.
Yeah.
And then take out that one and then have them completed.
Okay.
Make the scriptures there. And then the board can comment and then sign off on it, doesn't really need to post it to the board.
This is, this has been around a while, it really has, and I'd like to tell you my memory is as crisp as it could be, but. Maybe when we looked at this, we didn't look at all aspects of it.
We haven't talked about this.
We haven't talked about it in a, in a long time.
And it was on Brian's list. To, yeah, so I can see how.
In fact, I, you know, I really appreciate the seniority of your board, but I mean, parks and recs should at least be involved in the conversation.
No, we're, we're not, we're not forcing this on you, Phil, trust me, this, this is a little bit of a surprise to me too. I didn't expect it to be on Brian's priority list to be on the warrant. So I, so there's no, no blame on you either David, because you just, you've been here two weeks.
That have been going on.
Right.
Because the language in the draft warrants said council's drafting warrant.
Right, 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 yeah, so there's, we're still sort of, you know, figuring stuff out with the town administrator changeover and.
Absolutely.
Reading notes and, so I'm comfortable with taking this off and I, absolutely, your two boards should discuss this.
I would like to volunteer and I will check with our other group members because we're having a meeting tomorrow next.
Okay.
See if we can formulate some reasonable plan that would combine the boards and maybe work out some of the logistical details to preserve the. Volunteer nature and the kind of operational dynamics.
Yeah.
That we kind of face in this board or these, between these boards.
Yeah.
By keeping it kind of hands-on so that we could attract people to, to this volunteer, because in the end, if we don't. We're gonna be hiring people or we're not gonna be fixing stuff and doing stuff, that's.
And that's sort of what started a lot of this initiative several years ago of when, actually sort of when Brian started with us as the TA. And looking at all of the boards, the elected boards in particular, they had empty spaces and people weren't running and part of it was a feeling that. They don't want to go through the process of being elected, getting the signatures, doing all that stuff. They would just rather say, hey, I want to do it and be appointed, so there were many things that we started to.
I know, it's better to follow it, I've been following it, I mean, I'm an outlier, I enjoy.
Well, there are a few up there that needs. Yeah. Joan?
At a previous meeting, there was some discussion about. Fee for. Softball. Is that any, you know, is that been worked out?
So I can update you on that in, to the limited extent of my knowledge there. Tiffany non asked me to help her set up a meeting on the thirtieth of March for recreations only, I intend. To work with Mr. Gilling to resolve. I haven't seen minutes from that.
Karen, you good with that, removing nineteen?
Yeah, what's, what's the harm in delaying it down?
Yeah, exactly, let the, they, I think those boards should talk about it, see.
Yeah, they, it's not social.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that was once again, Brian, he had said that.
Well, my issue was that then, it's, it's now, there's no scope, there's no pricing.
Oh, that's what I was gonna add.
We got a brand new air conditioning sitting off there that we put out there last fall, it's not even paid for yet. And I don't know, when I asked him, he didn't have any specifics on it. So I'm, I'm gonna ask him to delete that until we understand.
All right, so we're gonna, Karen, you good with that, Article eleven, we don't, we don't have any bids or costs or anything? Okay.
Yeah, if you don't have a price, you can't ask the town.
Okay, so let's.
All of the other money on it, you know where the money's coming from.
Is the same, you said for one thirteen, Article seven. Uh, so Article seven, group one thirteen, project cost.
Well, that will ended up having a number put in the motion.
Actually, that, that was put on for the specific purpose, I guess we're getting the earmark grant, it's supposed to be in by June thirtieth. That if we don't get it, then we'll be able to continue to follow the project.
Okay.
Okay, perfect.
So, so Phil.
Yes, sir.
We're gonna delete that, we just, all right, we're gonna take that article out.
Okay.
All right, it's not gonna go with a take no action, because clearly it's not socialized correctly amongst the boards. But it, you know what, we, because there's so much time that went on, I mean, it's, it's just what he says, it's probably twenty seventeen.
Pretty sure it was.
Yeah, and so it's gotten a lost and I think it's got the right motivation behind it, I think. But I think it's obviously not been socialized correctly, so we're gonna just delete it for right now, and the only thing that we have to do is I, I'm. I, I want to be sure that, that, that the process that gets us to an endpoint is collaborative. And although everybody might not always agree with what we want to have done, it's still gotta get socialized correctly.
Yes.
And you're right, you've got to have a meeting, but, but I think more importantly is, since the, the board sponsors that article, we want to be part of that. Of those discussions along the way to kind of help shape that.
Agreed, absolutely, I, I think parks and recs should have a discussion, think about the pros and cons, think about the. Kind of the details of how this would be, what would need to be put into a, a warrant article and come back and talk to you.
Yeah.
That's fine, yeah.
I, I think that's an appropriate path to follow with that, I do, yeah.
For Article eleven, we do have a quote on that.
We do.
Twelve thousand four hundred, and Brian had told me to tie that quote sufficient enough, sixty-eight to something ask a town meeting. And I did provide that quote to him.
I've never seen it and I'd probably want to get an understanding of what we were doing for twelve grand.
Okay, I just wanted.
Well, it wasn't for twelve thousand dollars, it was in the, in, in the article, the list of articles. And it was blanked out because we originally, I think he was thinking that we could just repurpose it. But then, I, you know, my understanding was if you have to know, we do that to a town meeting. What's a twelve thousand dollars for, I'm not sure.
Okay, all right, so we'll hold on that.
Probably hang on to it for now till we sort that out.
Okay.
And the seventeen thousand for the floor on the police station, right?
Fine, yeah, police station, yeah.
Jake. Does he have Eric or Chief Dow, do they have a quote on that?
Not one that I've seen, have you seen one, David?
No, it's just something about just for that.
Can you, all right, because the, so I'm gonna go back in time, all right? We, the original floor that was there was asbestos and we overlaid it with plywood and some more material on it. And now that floor is gonna get replaced, if we got a hard quote that says, we're gonna fix the floor and here's how we're gonna do it, and it's for seventeen thousand. Good, if we're just kind of swagging a number, right, then not so good. All right, because that thing's right here for seventeen thousand, which means that it's gonna get read that way, and if we don't have a seventeen thousand dollar proposal. That covers all that work, and I don't know whether they're gonna, was a baby asbestos floor.
I think they were just gonna cover it.
Is that what they were gonna do?
That's what we talked about.
We did, all right.
Yeah, Eric said they're covering it.
Karen, did he say that he had a quote on it?
I could have sworn he said he did, but he didn't have it on hand that night.
I'm just just be sure.
I'm using the numbers that were provided.
Yeah, no, I know, I know, to give it a sanity check, that's all I'm saying.
It's hard jumping in the middle of these things, I guess.
It is, I would just, I know I asked him about the generator and he did have a quote from FM Generator that I saw, so.
Oh, he's on vacation.
I'm cool with that. I mean, twelve grand's not a lot of money for a generator installed, that's a twenty-two KW generator, that's.
I actually put one in in three times, it was thirty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's a natural gas engine, that's, but he said he had a quote on it, I think I, sorry, I don't know, I'm okay with that, that's what he's got.
All right.
I don't think he'll get the generator, I think right now there's seventy-two week delivery time, but. No, it's an existing switch, existing generator, and that's probably seventeen, eighteen years old. Like just looking updated. No, just swap out.
All right, anything else? So we've got a couple changes to this warrant, then. We're gonna remove Article eleven in this draft and move Article nineteen in this draft and we're gonna make one little typo in Article. Sixteen. And then we're gonna do something with Article thirteen about the water offset recap.
Well, I added that, I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know if you closed the warrant, if you closed the warrant and you get a, you technically open it to bring to the article back in.
Okay.
One of these is gonna be available for, for signature.
I would hope we have them available tomorrow.
Okay.
You just send me a text or something, let me know, because I'm.
Yes, of course, we'll try to get it done in similar timing as the warrant, that way Leah can sign and, and Karen can.
Yeah, just, I mean, I can combine, sign them, if they gotta be signed like before five o'clock tomorrow, just give me a heads up, because I'm not always home before five o'clock.
Okay.
There's, there's no real time I have, technically, I'm still, I'm gonna have to. Post it fourteen days prior to time.
Oh, all right.
So we're not, it's not like, the thing we were, we got was that. The ballot question.
Yeah.
Which sort of. That has been submitted to the town clerk and to the year of the attachment.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna take the next thing out of order. Just because we have our. Oh, sorry.
Just a, a quick question now, on the, one of the CPC articles there. I expect that, you know, we are not going to be. Looking for money for the.
Let's change, right?
So Article fifteen. I know we put a place marker in the warrant just in case. Yeah, we're not gonna be there.
I don't know, I, I see shot, so.
Well, we, when CPC meets Monday, the nineteenth, next Tuesday.
What do you want to do, leave this in or take it out? Because this is one of those.
Well, I was gonna say if we, you know, well, if we're gonna be signing this again tomorrow.
If, if we, if we leave it in, I would just say that it's not for Swallow Union, it's for the Union.
It's for the Union School, yeah.
And it says Swallow Union on there, so, I mean, we could leave it in there and then, you know, take no action where you.
Yeah.
So I don't expect, I don't expect to, you know, to be able to, you know, have anything in place. You know, to be able to, to.
Yeah.
But if we leave it there, just, you know, make sure that it's, it's specifies it's for the Union School.
So we'll delete the word swallow.
Delete swallow.
Under the, under Article fifteen.
Yeah.
So I have one thing for you guys, I heard from Eric.
Yep.
And he said, he goes, yes, I believe it was a quote from National Carpet, he will have Liz email it to us tomorrow.
Oh, he just sent me the same thing.
I'll do it.
Okay.
As long as he has a quote.
Yeah, I'm with Ron, I agree, I percent, gotta have something in favor.
Yeah. Okay, then leave, leave it where it is.
Okay.
And then on Article fifteen, delete the word swallow, do you want to add, after union, you want to put Union Building in there or just leave it as Union?
It says Union Building here in the, in the text, yeah, yeah, Union.
Union School, it's, you know, that's the name of the.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a language change.
And it may end up being a take no action at the town meeting.
I, I think probably.
But at least it starts to introduce the idea to people.
What's that?
It starts to introduce the idea to people. So. I don't see the harm in leaving it.
What?
Leaving fifteen in there for now.
No, you just don't take any action.
Yeah.
Swallow Union School Building, is that?
No, we're gonna get rid of the word swallow, the swallow is newer of the two buildings.
Yeah.
And the Union is the older of the two buildings, so we call.
The Union School. Okay, yeah, thanks for figuring that up, Jonah.
Let me just need a motion from each to accept the warrant as amended, I think right here.
Yeah.
And authorize signing.
So moved.
Is there a second? Karen, you with us?
Yep, second.
All right, any further discussion?
No.
No, all those in favor?
I agree, you and I.
Leah, I.
Ron, I.
Did you forget your name there for a minute?
No, I forgot, that's why I always have a name tag on.
I, I'm sorry, I have another question.
This is your last one?
Okay.
Yeah.
Listen, on the, on the first CPC article, normally that. Listen, on the, on the first CPC article, normally that article lists um, uh, some numbers in there.
Well, that usually would be in the motion.
Okay, so it's it's not that those won't be printed in the, uh.
Typically not the article, but the motion will have the breakdown, I think.
Yeah.
I could, I wish one of those numbers were in there. Okay, so.
Yeah.
As long as we realize that there's a bunch of numbers that have to be in there.
Yeah. Yeah. It'll do that, I'll say that. Okay. Okay, um, so the next item is to review the timeline for staffing, but I, because we have two of our, our captain and firefighter here, let's discuss the fire chief hire.
Well.
The consultant, so.
We have a job description.
We do have a job description. We do have, uh, uh, posting, which had been provided before with two new by the, uh, fire chief.
Yeah.
Uh, it is currently in the budget, thirty-two hours. Uh, based upon our last discussion, the person who gets hired to that position will make the decision about whether it's a full-time or per the.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh, I have outlined the, uh, the first category that I think I can use already, and I followed.
Yeah.
That would be the timeline I'd be looking at. And I didn't know whether we were gonna make a decision on the job description tonight. I did put it on the Mass Municipal Personnel Board, and I've gotten like thirteen more job descriptions if you, you know, that if you wanna look at that, or you just wanted the one you proposed is the one, is the one, that's fine.
So the one, so there were two, alright, that, that one that we had in the SOPs at the fire station was the one I sent you.
Okay.
Alright, and then there was a second one that came out, um, with the current fire chief put together.
Yes.
Right? And he, and he put his name on it, right? So, what hit my ass with this and with all of this is that the offices of the fire department, we're gonna work for this guy, right? Need to be involved in a collaborative way to what the process is, as well as whatever slating we do or shortlisting we do, alright? If if those folks are insulated from this and 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 it's it's transparent all the way, if they're insulated from this, and as a result of that, there's some misery that gets cured over there. It's a small group, I think there's twelve, alright, and 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 it's a small group, and they need to be felt, they need to feel like they're part of the process, right? You know, we we just hired a manager of the company, and there's eleven people involved working for this guy. You know, we socialize that, and that's, I want that to be the same thing for that, and and not have it be dictated or directed. We're gonna listen to them, we want them to see the documents, and and, you know, some of these guys are working, and some of them have been working for a very long time in fire departments, and their junior personality, and they understand this business, and we want them to feel part of this because we don't want to fail, alright? We, that's, as I said the last time, we've intro fire chief that fire department to death. Yeah, and we know now we're not gonna regionalize it, because there's legal issues with the state as well as with the municipalities entering into a intermunicipal agreement, there's conflicts with laws and rules, there was more stuff there than you could shovel. And so we're gonna put a full-time chief in there, town's gonna make a commitment to him, and he's gonna be one of everybody else, and and I want them to, here tonight, there are others that are here that are not here tonight. They need to be involved in this, and that's my, my, my ultimate objective.
Which is one of the reasons I'm the fire chief position, which is the first position I had approved, God, it's good for an advertisement, and I put it off till the next meeting, because I see that, you know, we we take a look at what you provided, listen what they provided, uh, not that, the chief provided, and then the other apples, the other job descriptions that I got in the MNC, CA, and if there's, we can craft something out of that and bring it back, and then advertise that's up to twenty-six, twenty-seven goes into the MMA, goes into the Fire Association. They have a closed date three weeks later. I originally went and put the five twenty-four in for the first round of interviews, I had a screening committee, but I didn't know how you do that here. That would be the opportunity that we could sit down and have the the fire people interview or meet with candidates if they feel qualified, we'll screen it down, and then they could then recommend three finalists to the board, which will be the second round of interviews. Uh, and the board will do a selection, then we do back, frame check, and do an audit for the position, and then have a start date, uh, possibly in June, uh, but I know that the district year starts July first, that's Friday.
Right.
So you want to have somebody on board July first, which that's the holiday weekend.
Right, right.
We, we, we ideally want to have that position filled as soon as possible.
Alright.
Right? Um, but the, uh, but the, 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 the timeline, everything that you have on there is 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 appropriate, right?
I'm just trying to, like, I I feel that you really need three weeks for that out there and have it.
There's no, there's no, yeah, yeah, I, I don't know how you disagree with that, but that job, the posting that we have, and the job description that is on the Dustle Fire SOPs.
Alright.
As well as the one that I think came out the other day, I want to be sure that the, there are, there are.
This is the, this is the chief's, this is the one.
I want to be sure that they have had an opportunity to read that. Alright, review.
Yeah, I only know in the SOG one, because that's the one we created a couple years ago, we all, I don't know that's.
Alright, so that would be the current.
Well, that's this.
That's what Chief Zibby put together.
This is, this is, this is what.
But they gotta compare it against what the SOP is.
Alright, okay. That's the one from the current fire.
Yeah, this is, is some sort of, uh, you know, plagiarized version of that.
So that's, this is what, this is the job description.
It is.
So we went on, your key sent that out years ago to the officers meeting.
Well, then that, we don't have to worry about that.
That's the one that that they want, um.
And then the language on the, uh, advertisement, if you're okay with that, I I believe I pulled it that, that once again, we could work on this together and and take what's in here, and and because I'm sure this and this are tied together, because both of these came.
I know they came in the same correspondence, but.
Yeah.
Uh, because I know in this one, the requirements have been, are, uh, it's, uh, a high school diploma, uh, associate bachelor's degree with fire, it says it's required. Uh, graduate from National Fire Academy, and this is saying ten years aggressively responsible work-related experience, including minimum of three years supervisor, blah, blah, blah. If we take this and compare this to the rest and just take out what doesn't fit.
Yeah, I mean, I'm okay with the fire chief not having a bachelor's degree.
Right. Alright.
This was, this was a big fire department, I was watching, I liked it.
Especially if it's like art history.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
He said, because they're required, it's minimum twelve years by high school, or equivalent, associates who may be forced to the fire science or bachelor's.
Let's sit down and close it at one. I'd rather just make sure.
Alright, we, we want to sit down and we.
Go through that, or if he gets in his hand, then he just read off of. Yeah, is out of your SOG.
Yeah.
So, but let me just, here's my caution, alright, I, I, my memories get soft, alright? If that SOG is saying that the fire chief's gotta have a bachelor's degree, he's gonna have a four-year degree.
It says associate or it's not, it doesn't say.
Or, and when I thought it said or thirty-nine in there.
Uh, associate's degree of bachelor's, let's make it major coursework in fire science, uh, high, it's highly desired.
Okay, could we take it? Okay, that's fine.
So that's, that's fine, yeah. Whereas then the the chief says, it says, uh, says it's a degree part of the.
Yeah, well. That is the document that they socialize amongst the group.
We've already approved the description a couple years ago.
Yeah.
And those did come before us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, I, we can work through, we'll bring it back on the twenty-sixth. We'll be ready to to post it up to the MMA and to the Fire Association on the twenty-seventh, and then we'll just keep the schedule going.
So I have a question. Is it four-year degrees? Is it a bad requirement?
No, it's not, but in this particular case, what we're saying is that you ca, it, it's highly desired, but the the risk you get is that it's such a small fire department, that we may not find someone that's willing to take that position that has a four-year degree or a bachelor's degree. And it's not a bad thing, it's not a bad word, but I don't want it to, I wouldn't want to have that language rule out other people who don't have that level of education, that's all I'm saying.
That people would have thirty years worth of experience.
Of experience as opposed to a degree, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, but a thirty-year vet, you're veteran at the fire department, you can only hang around for a few more years.
Well, we just, we just kind of, we just kind of have a discussion about it at this point. What what Dave is saying is that we could get someone in that has some number of years of experience managing a fire department that doesn't have a bachelor's degree.
That would be for somebody that has experience, that doesn't have the degree, definitely very attractive.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think most, most guys that aspire to chief position have got certainly an associate's, and in a lot of cases today they get a bachelor's. I think all the police officers have bachelor's degrees, right? So it it may, it may be that that's the way that's gonna be, but I wouldn't, if there was someone coming along that didn't have it, I wouldn't want to rule them out.
It just opens up your candidate pool a little bit more than.
A little wider.
A guy that has a lot of experience that would be.
I'm, I'm fine with the way it's run at this point. We have, we did review it several years ago.
Yep.
Um, I think it was before you were on the board, Karen.
Alright, so yeah, is that what you committed to with the fire department?
So the, we, we, there, there has been discussion around having some consultancy involved in this, because it's a technical position. It's a technical position, probably would do that with the police chief, if that's a technical position, right? We might look, if we were to hire a police chief, we'd probably have someone, um, on that in that wall that would act on a consultancy basis to say pass a failure of this in the police gym and 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 but, and that's true in the fire department, because it's a technical position, so um, there, there is a, there's an interest in amongst us to have a consultant involved in it. And there was a prior fire chief, Sean Murray, who was offered to do this for us.
Oh, alright.
He was here for two years, if I can just keep going, but I think he'd be awesome, because he understands the department, and he honestly, like, would be.
Who is this?
Sean.
Oh, oh, came back as the consultant?
Yeah, he's got all of us to choose, only because he knows the, the department and what's worked for two years, so.
So the thought is that he'd work with us in some sort of a technical role and advise on it.
Then we screen again with the three of the board, and then you do the three.
Yeah. After they've had an opportunity, after that screening process, because it's transparent.
What was that, Karen?
So I, I, I liked Chief Murray, I thought he was a great chief for us. The one part of me, just because I think, is it a, it's not sort of a conflict of interest, but he's someone who knows that, you know, on the positive side, he knows the temperature of the town and folks that are spending time, uh, at the fire department. However, there might be, you know, shouldn't there be some separation in who we're gonna hire as a leader for the next round of, you know, ensuring the future of the fire department? Like, shouldn't we have a consulting firm behind this search? So it's, is he a firm himself? Like, is he a licensed consultant? And.
So, so I'm not sure you know all of this, but Sean actually works for MRI Municipal Resources.
Yep.
And so he's an agent of MRI. That's actually, I think, how we got it.
Yes.
It is, yeah.
That's how we got him.
For, for studying for MRI.
So he's written, he, he's, he's written, uh, yeah, to answer your question, he's not individually with, he's associated with MRI Municipal Resources.
So where's he gonna pay MRI?
No, he's, I, okay, he's agreed to help us pro bono, so MRI's gonna waive their fee.
This is a point of information. I, uh, have worked as a consultant for MRI, just a disclosure.
Yeah.
Not that I haven't.
Yeah.
I just, I've done.
I think I remember that.
Yeah, okay.
I guess I just have some concerns, because he was, like I said, positively a good fire chief for the town at Dunn School, but I don't know, I, I, he, he, he left, right? I mean, he decided to leave, and we ended up going in a different direction. I, I at least me shrugging my shoulders more than anyone else. I'd be doing it in person, doing it right now. What, what now? You're, you're coming back, you know, to help us find the next person? Well, that to me would show that he's still, like, is interested in helping the members, though. I mean, I, I've asked him, like, kid, would you be interested in this? And it's not, I don't think it was anything personal against anybody, you know what I mean? Like, he could have told me very well to just no, I'm all set, but he doesn't want, he wants to see something good happen for the town and the members of this fire.
What was it, what would his consulting actually be on specifically?
Just to vet the re, just to vet the resumes, just another, just a voice, that's all. Another pair of eyes.
Yeah.
If you have a screen, maybe it's maybe the screening.
Yeah. Absolutely. It's just, just an opinion, that's all.
Right, that's an important opinion, of someone who again, positively knows the folks in the firehouse, but is it, you know, he, he, he elected to leave the fire department.
Yeah, he did.
Not on any bad terms, though.
No, he didn't leave on bad terms, though.
No, but he's, I mean, why, why does, why doesn't he just reapply for the job then?
He's retiring.
No, he's actually the chief at another town.
Yeah.
And but he's not, he's just an intern there, isn't he?
Yeah, I think he's got another year left.
Yeah.
John?
I, I'd rather just hire MRI.
We also have, uh, a couple, you know, retired chiefs that could, uh, you know, help out in, uh, this department.
Maybe come back and at the next meeting propose, have some, uh, composition for a screen that, you know, certain members, you know, if there's a, another fire agent being interested in helping, that way you know who's gonna be doing the initial screening, so that when it gets down to three, the board will be assured that, you know, those qualifications have been vetted by the of the, all of the screening committee and the consultants.
Okay.
So we'll come back at the next, we'll, I'll be.
Yeah.
We'll talk.
Yeah.
Is that my sound?
Yeah.
So put together a screening committee that could, are you guys gonna figure out?
Yeah, we'll figure it out, we'll bring it back, we'll bring it back to the chiefs or. Next agenda, next meeting.
Okay.
That sounds good.
Alright.
And then these other positions.
Alright, was it, well, just that, that sort of blunt into another, so was there anything else specifically on this agenda?
You have the others, uh, you have the other positions listed on the site.
We do, well, well, no, this is where, this is specifically on the fire chief hire and use of the consultant, so I think we've just.
I, I was just trying to.
Okay.
Laying out for.
Okay.
No, I'm, I'm in favor of it, and, um, the approach is appropriate.
Yeah. Alright, so back to the timeline then, so now we can jump. So what were you gonna say, Ron? What were the other?
No, I'm just looking at them.
So the couple things I'm noticing, have you spoken to Cheryl specifically about this timeline? I think she's away too.
I got the dates from, from Jake, when Jake, I'd asked him when people retire.
Okay.
When you're gonna be in schedule, and we tried to kind of carry.
Alright.
Yeah, that's why, like I said, the difficulty, the other positions are, you have, you know, the person's leaving on the twenty-fourth, who I've spoken with, and she's agreed to to take on some of the responsibilities all the way through August, if needed, on an hourly basis, and then, uh, you have the treacher collector was not timed till August twenty-first.
Right.
You have to wait at least until, you know, that period to, to have somebody in place as a second to retire. You can't have two people doing the same job for that, you know, month and a half or two months. So I try to take that into account, and whether we really want to move forward with the treacher collector slash time book. Is that really a viable option, I guess, that? We got the, you know, I haven't real, that, I know that that was proposed.
Yeah, it was. Yeah, it was.
Is that really the way you want it though?
I don't know the answer to that.
Because there are two highly distinct positions and one more of a financial position, the other is more of a legal uh, position and, and to get a candidate that can fulfill both of those positions and, and do that, I, I'm not so sure that's gonna work.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm.
I, I'd like to believe it would. I don't, I don't know, I don't, I don't know what, you know, in terms of background, you know, of the community, but.
So it's set up in a budget this way, right?
Yeah, we have a fixed time, a fiction prior to time.
Okay.
We have a reflective budget that's handed out.
I honestly just don't know enough about either position to make any sort of intelligent decision. So, so.
There could be a person up there that would want to do this. But I, I think it's highly unlikely that you're gonna find somebody if, without, with the, the, the experience of both positions, you're gonna have them learning either one or the other, you know? If that's the direction you wanna move in, so.
I'm in agreement with you.
Couldn't we write it up and then advertise for it?
And see what happens, or is that just gonna kill time?
I got the MMVA, I'm, I'm, I got town clerks, this picture, I'm gonna get the treasurer collector and I could craft something out of that. The group, the MMVA is, is really responsive. I put something out there saying, you know, within three hours, I have to be, you know.
Oh, good, okay.
Yeah, that's cool.
So from a, the technical aspect, right? I think, I never got an answer to this. Needs to be a CMMC. Right? Massachusetts Municipal Clerk.
Yeah, I, I, I'd have to answer that. I honestly know about the problem I have.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I think I, 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 I asked a question. I didn't get an answer to it. It was one of those, let me check all the things.
Certification isn't legally required, and I believe their association will not certify them until they've been in office, what is it, three years, a full term?
Do we need a CMMC?
I don't know if that's necessarily required. I believe that certifications, that's an association certification.
No, certified by the state, I, I think, I think, you know, I, I think.
Because anyone in town where it's elected can just become elected to the office.
And usually they have a very time to achieve that certification. If it's, if it's held by, you know, the town clerks association or the town clerk or collectors, I know they have conferences up in, in the M H R S, the, the, particularly the accountants and the treasurer collector, where they get credits to earn towards their certification, so. I got, I got to reset. I don't know at the top of my head whether that's correct or not, but I can find out.
Yes.
I think on the, um, I asked a question about the certification. And Brian, not quoting, you know, word for word, but, you know, who's, yes, it's three, you have three years, you're gonna appoint somebody to certify about it, and they work it over to those.
They.
It's online classes and centering.
Okay.
Because I had a treasurer collector down in three towns that wasn't certified, and she was earning it, and they gave her part of a contract situation, and said she had to earn it for seven years.
Yeah, that's an okay thing to do. It's okay for someone that's trying to develop their career. I'm just not sure how you can put those two things together. How many, if, if we were to look at the other three hundred and fifty towns, how many towns have certified clerks and certified collectors in the same person?
Yeah, I, I would, I would think it's pretty.
If, if at all.
Yeah, there'll be a smaller town.
I don't know how you can marry those two positions, you know, so close to Boston, I don't think you're gonna find someone in this area that has got those capabilities or desire to do that. And I was buzzing about that whole link of putting those two positions together.
So I explained that in my initial interview with the board, it's like, those are kind of infant towns.
Yeah, yeah. It's like wanting a permit to be an electrician.
I'm, I'm here to carry out all of the board. This is something the board feels is, is the direction they wanna move it. There's been a proposal made that this is something you feel is important, well, I'll do my best to, to get you that person, but.
I think this came up with just um, brainstorming and finding ways to, you know, try to save some money and if reorganizing the office in there is a way that could do it and increase office coverage for, you know? So Brian put together some ideas, and this was one of the ideas, and, and we never really discussed it significantly.
We didn't discuss it significantly.
No.
Let's talk.
Was it one of the goals of the position for the town clerk was, did there be enough budget bandwidth for an assistant town clerk in there? And it'd be more of a treasurer collector than a true town clerk?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's, yeah, the, the person would be the assistant. The assistant would be the, the, yeah, the town clerk.
Essentially, yeah.
And that would be use, yeah, that would be useful for our town because our town clerk's hours are, you know, sometimes, you know, it spread, spread a little bit at times, so we're often trying to find someone else to backfill some of those roles.
I'm not saying we can't have done this, I mean, you know, it's, this is the direction that's on.
I wonder if there's a way, there must be like a retired town clerk group or something and put the question out there, have you, have they seen this sort of arrangement before and?
Well, she belongs to Mass Municipal Claws, and she chats on that site all the time.
I talked to her today about, she, she did say that she was going to put it out there to see what.
We'll see what we get out of it. It's not the wrong, I just don't want to upset anybody here.
She didn't hear.
I'll bet.
I don't, I don't think there's a lot. I know for, I did mention that there was one, I think it's Southwick.
Southwick, yeah, that's all on twenty minutes of here.
Southwick? Where is Southwick?
You can't get it from here.
I don't have those.
That's my point, is you're gonna, or you find someone close to the area that's gonna make that, make, make that Southwick is not here. That, that sort of person probably exists without the virtues.
Yeah, there's a ton, a ton of the time.
Yeah.
People wear four and five masks.
Yeah, around here, you know, it's like trying to, trying to plum, that's an electrician's slum, right?
So the, so the idea too, Karen, that you're saying is that with that, then that would open up money to bring in an assistant clerk?
Well, yeah, that was part of the, yeah, yeah, the financial goal of it.
That's really sure.
Right, okay, all right. It's all coming.
Now, you have a part, a part-time town clerk, so it wouldn't be a loaded position hourly person, maybe that's your retirement.
It'd be part-time for both, both, right, yeah.
Yeah. But, and we can keep getting around the rest, and maybe it changes that timing for, if we don't think budgetary is the right idea.
Yeah.
It might not be.
It might not.
It might not be.
It might just a little pusher you're on, so.
Look, if the goal is to improve hours and expand services, another alternative is you prefer to pay relatively low for your treasurer collector. You could make your treasurer clerk full-time and give them the additional responsibility to be an assistant town clerk. This would be good arranged with a new town clerk. That person could then be trained to issue basically what people ask for, like dog licenses and vital records, which they have the power. So, there are other ways that could potentially be done.
Right, well, I think that's what we were asking for. I, I, I can't say that my heart set, my heart was set on this particular arrangement. We had asked for ideas and somehow we ended up with this one being in the budget, but. I, I, I don't know. I guess I'm seeking advice as to what makes sense.
Yeah, and which one's a premium position?
Yeah.
The treasurer collector or is it town clerk? I mean, obviously, we, we have fiduciary responsibility to town, but we of, you know, constraints and what we can compensate people for their time, so.
I think it's pretty important.
I think so, so.
I don't think, in terms of like you can quantify that. I think that they both have, they both have certain skill sets that, uh, that, you know, make their position unique in town government and, and trying to find somebody with those two skill sets in the same places is the challenge.
Yeah.
Like I said, I'm, I'm willing to, you know, I can, I can come back at the next meeting, you know, discuss it, know, figure out, you know, get some
Okay.
sample for, you know, sample towns and relay all that information to them.
I just think we gotta have a plan because she's indicated she's gonna leave May.
May twenty fourth, that's what last day.
She did agree today when I was talking with her, she said that she would stay on an hourly basis and she wouldn't be willing to to help out until we, we could really provide us with, so.
We have the funds to cover that?
We have the funds in the budget now for the position, so, yeah.
Okay.
And she gets paid hourly, it's.
She's not hourly now.
She's not, she's salary.
She's salary.
And so is that hourly rate gonna be?
It is high. It was forty-five dollars versus thirty-nine dollars, which is a, a late rate.
With the forty-five dollar number, thanks.
Uh, she.
Her number.
Yeah, she said that she.
That's, that's the right strategy.
For her.
Yeah, for her.
Yeah.
Well, I guess, I guess, I guess what happened.
That's the right stat.
Well, I guess what happened on May twenty fourth, when we have, you know, no town clerk and we get.
You're right.
We get.
You'll be, you'll be glad that.
Yeah, right.
We have, but we did, and we do have money in the budget, we can write that all for a clerk consultant that would cover beginning July first, but we're gonna hold six weeks for that.
Right.
That timeline, and there is, there is a, a critical component that right after she retires in terms of, uh.
This is all, this issue's all right, it is.
Uh, you have a, you have a primary, um, the accepting the applicants for, uh, the primary on it's the le- the first day it's open is May twenty fourth, the last day it's open is May third, so I guess if that's a big primary election for the fall.
The chief doesn't want to do that.
She's gonna be gone.
Yeah.
The same day.
Wow, okay.
So like I said, you know.
I have a comment from my, my wife who helps Carol.
I know, I was gonna say.
I think, you know, we all know the town clerk is tremendous, has tremendous, not a huge share of responsibility, but supporting democracy and being able to vote and running that has been her show for a long time. And that's gonna be like a really huge effort. Because I've heard all the stories of, uh, we eat about, how we set up and all that kind of activity we've done in the library in years going is something that you're gonna need somewhere, just to kind of underscore that.
Well, if you're gonna, if you're gonna do that combined position, you're really not gonna be able to do it till the treasurer collector retires on August eleventh.
Right.
So how do you, you know?
How do we bridge that?
The town, the town clerk consultant was added into the budget to cover us until I wanted to get somebody on board in that multi-level position.
Right.
Because when the elections roll around, I mean, it's really all hands are at. I mean, she's not, this new person, if they're doing other duties, they really wouldn't have time for those duties just because of the commitment going on.
Especially starting in August because there's a prime, the day after the, because the general court has to be with town clerks. And, um, so there's gonna be weeks of early voting for that beforehand. So anyone who do combine one, someone starting right in the body hands is going to have to walk right into an early voting while still also potentially being treasurer collector.
The town, the, the state, the Commonwealth does not help us out with all the early voting.
No.
There's a lot overdue.
Yeah.
And they're used to it.
And that makes the argument, you really need somebody that knows how to do the job.
Absolutely.
It's not a place you want to be learning how to do your job.
Right.
No, because she's got responsibility directly to the election commission.
That's right. Okay.
It's not a, it's not a, you know, drug, just on the drug training.
I'm not sure we read that completely correctly when we put this plan together and understand those segregations.
Yeah.
That we understood the right way.
I'll bring it back.
Yeah, let's bring it back.
We can have a little discussion about how.
Okay. Um, okay, so we need to get more info on that. The other one is the conservation planning administrator. Again, yeah. It's been a combined position, but they are two separate jobs, and we just haven't had the same person filling both of them. I mean, ideally, if we could have someone do that, I think, again, it's gonna be tough to find someone to do both.
Can do both. But there's some compatibility there.
There is, yeah, there is.
In terms of now, it's required in the position.
You may be more likely to find that combination than you would be the other tre- treasurer collector clerk.
Yeah, so I did find it might be somebody coming from Pepperell who can do that role that we're looking for, that Cheryl is vacating.
Who?
It's a friend of one of the planning board members and one of the selectmen at Pepperell.
To do which role?
To do like a combined, because they know, they know Cheryl's, of course, and they're like, well, they, they have the, the hours, the time to do that role, so.
All right, well, yeah.
A chance.
If they can apply, I mean, we can't just roll anybody in, but, yeah.
Yeah, no, I, I, I said to them, have them apply once, unless she's opening or whatever, you know, just.
Okay. Um, a couple of months ago, I did get a note from, um, the chair of the planning board with sort of a list of things that they'd be looking for in a person. I gotta pull that back up again and
Share that.
and, and talk with Cheryl too, and what her throwing together with the job description may be. And if we, I could, I don't know, do we apply as in a combined role and see what happens, or just do, do the, do?
Do that.
Or do two of them separately simultaneously and maybe see if this?
Lot of that role, like combine them.
Together, they're benefited, so they count as some attraction.
Right.
Yeah.
If you separate it, it's too siloed.
Well, there's not as much overlap as you may think there is, but.
Yeah, it's a tough one.
I would probably rather have someone come in with planning experience and learn conservation rather than the other way around. So.
They're both, they're both technical positions, they're both highly regulated in terms of how they operate, in terms of timelines and things like that.
Yeah. Cheryl's been very involved on the planning though, and but, you know, she knows more about it than any of the board members do. So they have relied so heavily upon her for everything that, um.
Well, you won't get the travel knowledge back.
Right, no, but we're gonna need someone that's gonna be able to, like, step into that role pretty quickly. As opposed to conservation, you know, we've all been on this board forever. It's my job. I know it inside and out. I can, I can train somebody in that, right? So, um, I think that and, but the timeline looks good. So.
I'm just trying to, because I'm not still feeling my way around, hate to say that, but.
All right, well, hey.
Day seven.
Yeah, exactly. No, understood. Okay.
That's it.
All right. Well, that's a great start, David. Thank you. Um, all right. The last thing we have is the vote on the use of Wetlands Protection Act funds for the consulting and technical assistance of the Drew Boardwalk Project. Um, have a note here from the Conservation Commission. As explained in the Mass Association of Conservation Commissioners' Environmental Handbook, section twenty dash four, that, now, point two, point two, the Dunstable Conservation Commission is requesting written approval to spend ten thousand dollars from the Wetlands Protection Act funds for consulting and technical assistance for the Drew. To spend ten thousand dollars from the Wetlands Protection Act funds for consulting and technical assistance for the Drew Board, Boardwalk Project. Bureau of Accounts Informational Guide released February nineteen eighty-eight states monies for the Wetlands Protection Fund may be only used to carry out the Conservation Commission's duties under the Wetlands Protection Act. Not for other commission activities, examples would be the cost of engaging consultant and technical assistant for new projects. Commission requests this assistance of a certified wetland assault, wetland scientist, as well as technical assistance with filing of the notice of intent to ensure salmon book is protected. So, it's a belief of the Conservation Commission that it meets the definition. There is money in the fund, it's not a fund that gets used frequently because it is pretty specific on how things can be done.
So, here's, here's where, let me just elaborate, all right? The ten grand is being spent for a consultant and technical assistance, who's doing the design now?
Um, well, we've been working with a town engineer, Coyle and Tanner.
So there's an engineering company that's gonna say, you're gonna do this, you can do that, the wood's gonna be this.
Yeah.
Is that part of this ten grand?
Yes.
It is, so, this ten grand gets us to a design that we can put off a bit.
Correct.
Okay, it doesn't quite read that way.
Combined, combined with.
Combined with the CPC money. Yeah.
Yeah, and, yeah, that's all I'm saying, did, when I read this, it looks as though we got technical consultant, but in fact, you need, there's an engineer that's involved that's gonna design this.
Right, well, they're, yeah, they're kind of doing all of it, they're doing the, the notice of intent, the design, the.
That's all I'm saying, you need us to.
So, um.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So this ten thousand's part of the twenty-eight, that's sixty.
Twenty-eight is, the twenty, the ten thousand plus the twenty-eight thousand.
So thirty-eight thousand dollars for this Drew Boardwalk project to be designed and scoped out, basically?
Yes.
And how expensive a project would you fall apart at the end, this is gonna look like?
What do you mean, how extensive, what do you mean?
How expensive, so, is it gonna cost us half a million bucks to do this, and we're spending thirty, almost forty K, uh, designing and?
I wouldn't say that much, but, um, do you remember what it?
Uh, if I recall roughly, all total. The, uh, the cost was gonna be around two hundred thousand dollars.
Right, however.
Locally, right, locally, we'll get a grant for eighty percent of that.
Right, right, eighty percent, yeah, so we'd be looking to, the commission would be looking to apply for a grant. We, we missed the deadline for this year.
We can, we can, they, they have to apply, whether it's by the beginning of February or yet.
Something like that, yeah, so, um, so there would be a grant, and if we don't get the grant, then I, the project.
Well, if we don't.
Probably won't happen.
Yeah, I would hope that if you don't get the grant that year, maybe you can get it the next year, you know, it's, uh, it's a popular, popular program.
Right, so.
Just because you don't get it, you know, the first time, that's the big money.
You can, right, you can play.
One of, one of the things about grants that you should understand is that if you don't get it the first time, the likelihood increases if you go down the line, only because. You can ask the agency for the rating sheet to find out how they rated it, and find out where you're strong or weak, and then the next year, address those issues, so that the grant is more competitive.
Okay, that's good.
But that could cost you money, cause you gotta, you gotta check the longevity of the scope, right? You know, the, of the design work and things, how, how often does that change over years, right?
I wouldn't expect the design work to change, um, just. The design wouldn't change, but probably the cost would change.
Yeah.
So.
But you get the design idea.
Yeah. And right now, partly, the, you know, the costs are high because there's some wood being put on this, and wood has been astronomical. But the base footings are, are proposed to be metal that, unlike these big spiral drills that go down. So, that has good longevity as well, so. Just the planks would be what.
It's like the, uh, like the Indian school system, I mean, that is not gonna go bad in, uh, in a few years, uh.
Yeah.
Whatever, technically, obviously, the cost has, uh, changed something.
Yeah.
And these are funds that, just to refresh my memory, that it can be used for nothing else, right? Like, I, I'll sell it, right, you get by it, if you say there's nothing else, it's really useful for.
Well, it, it, it's limited for what the commission can use it for, I mean, we can't use it to. Um. Draw a blank, but it's.
You know, you can't get a police officer, if you know, you can't get a.
No, right, 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 right.
Okay, yeah, I, I, I know those answers, but I just wanna make sure we say it on the record.
It says here, maybe used only to, to carry out the Conservation Commission's duties under the Wetlands Protection Act, not for other commission activities.
Do you have motion for?
And here's one thing, I am on the Conservation Commission, I should pre-cuse myself from this vote.
Okay, so, the, the motion's gonna be to, uh, where's this money coming from?
The Wetlands Protection Act Fund.
So my motion is that we allow the expense, the expenditure of ten thousand dollars for the Drew Boardwalk Project consulting. And technical assistance coming from the Wetlands Protection Funds. That's my motion.
I will second.
All favor? Aye.
Aye, Karen, good.
Aye, Ron, Michael.
Leabas Baines has recused.
Motion passed.
All right, great, thank you very much. And, all right, last thing, we have, if I can find this, my messy notes here. Minutes from March twenty-ninth, is there a motion to approve those as written, or any recommendations?
I'm okay with them, so, I'll motion that we approve the meeting minutes from March twenty-ninth.
Second.
Before the discussion. All's in favor, Leah, yes?
Ron, Michael, aye, yes.
Karen, yeah, yes.
Okay, thank you. Anything else from you, David?
Just a few things that I've been working on, uh, I've talked to Trinity EMS.
Oh, good, okay.
Uh, regarding the ambulance service, uh, they're interested in, uh, an extension. In terms of the background, what I know about it, they provide a service, we don't pay for it. Uh, they're looking to the board to extend their contract one more year, I guess it's two, two options.
Yeah.
And, uh, I can bring that back in a little bit at the next meeting.
Please do.
Okay.
Uh, the, I have an update on the mud relief bid. Um, I've spoken with Jeff Olson, who was the consultant, as well as John, I'm trying to find, uh, John.
Hughes, yeah.
And we settled on a date of May twenty-fifth of the bid opening. Uh, two thousand twenty-two, it's gonna be in central register on April twentieth. We're having a bid thirds meeting on April twenty-sixth of the bid conference, and then I just got put it in the paper two consecutive times. Fourteen days prior to two, two separate weeks, fourteen days prior to, uh, the, uh, the bid opening, so we'll move in front of that. The, uh, in the top meeting, I looked in the sound system.
Oh, good, okay, yeah.
The chairs, are they, the chairs can use some downstairs?
No, we, yeah.
We left them there, the guy came and picked them all up, he had a bread dish from, a chair company.
Do you remember who that was?
We don't, Ryan handed all the stuff.
All right, so, okay, the generator comes from Ohio, and then the question, but a ten, you guys, we have one time, the other ten.
We did one time, and then the next time we didn't, and I think we just, we didn't budget to put for the one this time either.
Okay.
We just set a range.
Just, yeah, tell folks that they're sunscreen.
Sunscreen, hats, glasses, yeah.
And water.
Yeah, water, gonna be quick, it's only eight, eight, seventeen articles now.
Don't drink it.
Amy's last words.
Yeah.
Final thing, it's a bit of a.
Last word.
Next week, we'll sit down, and people will find out what's going on, and.
Okay.
Better, you know, get on. Basically, an open board kind of thing, what people can, coming with their work on, and how we can work together.
Okay, great.
That's it?
Good. All right. I'm not gonna ask anything else. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Leah, aye. Okay, great, thank you all. All a good night.